Thank you. Called the city council meeting to order and we have all representative or all council members present, including council member Martinez Schultz, Mayor Pro Tim McFerrin, council member Dominguez and council member Prezyk. First item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order and there's a roll call for that. Is there approval to call the meeting to order? Yeah, I don't know why that, have we done that before?
It's always the start, but you did.
Oh, yeah, I did it. Okay, yeah, sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, how about I make a motion to approve the agenda?
That would move things along very smoothly. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. Next is approval of the consent agenda. Again, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. So that includes the Court of Treasury report, which was sent separately, and the city council meeting minutes. So next up is that if I was requested by folks that provide early childhood care to do a proclamation, I did that tonight at six o'clock and the proclamation has been sent to all of you. So are there any questions, concerns about that? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports from, first up is the city engineer Leo Boland.
Good evening. First one I'd like to put on is well number two. They did a pumping test today with a new pump, the new motor in the well and didn't quite get it where they needed it. They've got to still do some bacteria testing and usually by the time we get all the controls and all that work out of taking, we this what we call startup. And then I think I told you before, they're, they're still going to be waiting on their control panel that will make it go on and off automatically. Right now they're doing it by hand, but still waiting on a schedule for when that control panel is here. We had it last week and so I'm seeing that today as we've gotten one. Things are looking good as far as the wells up and running. Things look good now. Probably another couple of weeks of testing and controls. That's that part. Police water treatment plant sent the city manager a report on basing kind of a secondary look at phasing based on some of West Liberty food's cutbacks. And then today we have a rate study onboard. So between those two projects, we're probably getting together with us and the foods to talk about whether this phasing works for them or not. Originally prior to their cutbacks recently. But that's the wastewater treatment plant. And then the other thing that will we haven't developed at 100% is a kind of a west side sanitary future study. Kind of goes along with the wheelie, but it's bigger study than just wheelie and we put some mapping together and we give that to the city manager. That's all I have.
Are there any questions for the city engineer? Okay, next step for city reports and we have information in the packets. There anything further city manager groups that you'd like to add? Are there any questions? Any questions on police street solid waste reports?
Well, it's nice to see that Officer Happens back on the roster.
All right, committee reports.
I just would like to add one with me. I want to introduce Cody Franklin, our new electric superintendent. During committee report, I just requested if he had an opportunity tend tonight and we'll be working with him for his month of reports going forward. Just started here Monday. So he's been busy onboarding and absorbing and, you know, and he's already, we've already had some really great clean conditions. So it's nice to never, never forget his first day of work. It'll be equal for us every year. Well, no joke, it was a good, good to see him come back through the door again and back on board with our organization again. So.
Well, I think. I think that both what council member Dominguez said and the fact that you took this position deserves a round of applause. All right, are there any other committee reports? I'm not aware of any. All right, next step or binge is a vendor voucher claim list number one in the amount of a billion twenty-two thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars. And most importantly, two cents. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Well, now to the point of public comments and or correspondence. So are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Hearing none, we'll move on. Is there any correspondence that folks would like to share?
I spoke with the business owner downtown just regarding our city code for the parking on Third Street. And this explained there with the system of the league. And she was honored to deal with that. And it has somebody reach out to me about pot pools, kind of wondering where we were with filling those, taking care of them. One that stuck out to them, that's one on Miller Street. So I spoke with Adam, he let me know that they kind of started that and they'll be worked on getting that big one on Miller. So two pretty quickly. And we have someone reach out out the water, like the nozzle for summer.
The bypass meter?
Yep, bypass meter. She was working with that with the front city hall and so that is pretty good. I own that, I'm working with it. And I spoke with Roger Henry Morrison concerning the dirt at the end of Eighth Street, which was previously the option. They gave me an update that dirt should be halted being placed there. And that will be just kind of keeping an eye and making sure that nothing's going missed there. The residents in that area have been concerned about water runoff on the street. That's already kind of a issue that we're aware of.
Yeah, we'll continue with council members checks as you're seeing the property owner. They have some communication from DNR and likewise from the city's building inspector. And so we'll just make sure that we're monitoring, especially now following Eddie tomorrow and just have us check on that area over there to see, you know, if there's any impact outside of what normally water, sanding or water drainage. Given the fact that you know, if you got in, not necessarily being, you know, excavated or handled as it should be in order to not cause any issue.
I know Roger and Henry did appreciate my follow-up and they did add that they have seen dump trucks in there as like last week. I do share the concern with the residents in that area just because I believe this is the second time they've all brought this forward. The last time we found out the same communication that there should be no dumping dirt in that area. Here we are again.
Unfortunately, if we don't have, you know, if we don't see it, then, you know, it's understanding it's not a problem.
That's what I told them.
Yeah. And I will follow up with thinking.
Okay.
One thing.
Okay.
Um, I, so I, someone reached out from the Mustang Equality Coalition about the training that they had. So I, since we didn't get it put in an agenda, I just told her, I, since it was a reach to the council, the same public comments that there will be two trains in West Liberty regarding LGBTQIA plus 101, which is partnering with One Iowa. Actually, we brought LGBTQIA 101 to Johnson County and it's really helpful. They're actually doing two sessions in West Liberty on May 2nd and May 6th and the second one be English and the May 6th, I believe be Spanish. So I just wanted to say that out loud and, you know, we can maybe talk about that next. They're looking for sponsorship, but it doesn't necessarily have to be financial. It could be just support from the community, put on their flyers, things like that.
I believe the training is here.
Yes.
Community center for both the second and the sixth.
Yeah. Um, yeah, and I was, I've been working with them and we were probably having our next company. We had communicated that the city would assist with the, the community center. Space. Oh, great. And so we have something on our next council. So thank you for bringing that.
Other council members? All right, city manager? City clerk? All right, next up is an old business is ordinance 2024 oh three oh five hyphen oh five and ordinance amending, amending the city of West Liberty zoning map to establish the zoning of thirty-five parcels of land on the west side of North Elm Street from Railroad Park to Rainbow Drive organizing into two categories, R2 and C2, removing M1 and M2 third, and this is the third and final reading. So is there a motion to approve the third and final reading?
Motion to approve third and final reading?
Is there a second? It's seconded by, or by council member Martinez. Okay, is there discussion? When we did this a couple of weeks ago, no one had gotten any concerns reported to. All right, hearing no discussion, the clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Prezyk?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
Next up is the appointment for the EMS board and council member Prezyk is nominated for this position. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of council member Prezyk?
Motion to, oh, you go. Motion to through.
And second, okay, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. It is approved.
Mr. Mayor, we need to follow up with Chris Vazquez and let him have contact and get the contact information.
Okay, next up is discussion appropriate action by the city council of West Liberty, Iowa on the event request for the West Liberty Farmers Market in West Liberty, Iowa. So first we have discussion, then we have a motion and then they have consent vote. Any comments from anyone regarding this?
Well, Mr. Mayor, as far as my understanding is the Farmers Market, again requesting their annual space. They're on Spencer Street. There's no changes to what they're going to be requesting as far as outside of electricity, no parking and solid waste garbage receptibles. So and again, it's being, it's been, it's being managed by Jim and Jessica.
Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve? Motion approved. Is there a second?
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
It shifted. This one is just a consent.
If I would read, I would know that. Sorry about that.
Sure.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Discussion and appropriate action for the city council of West Liberty on the event request on the West Liberty Chamber of Commerce during the year 2024. So first up is discussion.
Mr. Mayor, council, you'll find in your packets the outline of the events that's being requested and presented by the Chamber of Commerce. And we do have Ms. Donna Alberta here present on behalf of the chamber tonight in case you happen to have any questions regarding these events. Again, as you will see, there's no additional requests at this time or changes from previous and past events. And they have provided their liability coverage per requirement for that part to be completed.
Can I take further?
No, all the really question is pretty much the same thing we had in the past couple of years. Spencer Street shut down from beginning to Saturday and Sunday as far as the parade, having the police escort and having the barricades put out prior to the, as for the picking of parts, anything, just have the police come by at the end of it, just to make sure we don't have any party doors that are not over there. Thirty thousand two and that looks like.
And Mayor Council, we, we stay flexible, we stay open line of communication with the changer. It's not occasionally if there's something that needs to change, you know, you know, an opportunity presents itself that, you know, they can take advantage of more entertainment or something different than, you know, we stay flexible and we bring it back to you if we need to update these requests.
And I just want to let you guys know that in there, there was a place holder for the music and that will come at a later time in the actual application. This is just going to be the little part for the events that they're sponsoring and then we will see that.
Okay. All right, is there any further discussion? I will entertain a motion. Motion approved and a second.
Second.
Okay, and it is a consent vote. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, it is approved. Next up is resolution 2024 0402 hyphen 141. A resolution amending the employee handle to update the West Liberty Department, Police Department hours worked before overtime begins. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Mr. Mayor and council, I would just add that the resolution before you is being presented on behalf of the Police Department Chief has worked with his team and they continue to go over things in order to make attractive schedule in order to sustain and recruit officers for the West Liberty Police Department. And one of those things being that currently right now it's set at eighty-six because they're an emergency service. So under the wage an hour, that's reflected if you work eighty-six hours, it's permissible not to pay overtime after that. However, with twelve-hour shifts, the eighty-four would look more attractive and create, just as I said, a recruitment and sustainability for our officers to move back to eighty-four and pay time and stuff. And the new budget, the current budget, we can make that work with the way that the numbers are looking right now. And likewise, we've set the new budget based on these hours if approved. Chief, would you like to add anything more to that?
It's got a large complaint. It's just something else to play with. I talked to him previously. He worked eighty-four hours and paid him that. Get eighty-five, they're like, I'll make it. So it's just something for many of us. Eighty-four, that's, it's with the twelve-hour shift to maintain our reputation with the everybody. Most offices would like to use eighty-four, but probably if they have destiny.
All right, other than council member Martinez's questions, are there other questions or comments for session? Okay, this is a roll call vote. The clerk will call the roll.
Prezyk?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Martinez? Motion passes by zero.
Next up is resolution 2024 0402 hyphen 142, a resolution to amending the employee handle to update sickly from accrual to sickly loaded at the first of each calendar year. And this is a roll call vote. So first is there a motion to approve the resolution? Motion approved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We're now in discussion on what this is, is that the employees of the city receive sixty-four hours of sick leave each year. And instead of this being accrual, it's loaded at the beginning of the year and they're they're paid out the sick leave at the end of the year.
And Mayor Council, again, add that this is another benefit to our city employees from a retention and an attractive piece as far as the ability to, whatever you don't use, then you have an opportunity to cash out at the end of the year, which goes right along with your overall salary on an annual basis. And concerns being that when we pay it out at the end of the year, that they currently now with an accrual, you start the first year off with a zero balance. And so this does not impact, it's just front waiting versus accruing. And anyone who is terminated or resigns from the seat does not receive the sick leave benefits. So again, that would not really affect, you know, as far as the budgetary decision. They're not paid out when they leave, but it doesn't matter. Yeah. Which is a common practice.
Is there further discussion from the council? The roll call vote, the clerk will call the roll.
Schultz?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Prezyk?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
Okay, resolution 2024 0402 hyphen 143 is next. A resolution to approve pay estimate number five from P Construction Company for the well number two phase two pump house improvement project for retaining and project closeout in the city of West Liberty, Iowa. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? Is there a discussion?
This, this is basically the retainage and it's those out of phase two, which is the building improvements to draw it off so that there's a pump room itself. It's not part of the hatch, it's not part of the well, those are separate and it's not part of the roof. I did want to report the roof is still leaking and they have done, they, before this rain, they did leak test where they filled it up with some water and it was leaking. It appears to be leaking through the brick and down to not, not at the, the hatch, but I thought maybe it was. So DC Taylor is going to give me a change order request to put in some coping that would go up the brick wall and more or less cover the brick. And it's kind of hidden, you can't see it. It's where there's two levels of the roof. I think it'll look pretty good. I don't know the price. If the price comes in high and we want to then go have a mason look into it, the problem with the mason, then they do what's called tuck pointing to fix it. Is again, you have to make sure that they find every little place water can get through. I find the roof there sometimes can put a cover on it and fix it better. So that's, that's a correction. I'd like to go, but we haven't seen the cost yet. You in there today?
Yeah.
How bad was it?
Pretty bad.
Was it?
Yeah.
We got a lot of it.
Yeah.
But we know that's an issue. That is not the issue of these guys. I recommend payment of retainage.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Prezyk?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
Next up is item F, resolution 2024 0402 hyphen 144. A resolution to approve the water and sanitary utility rate study agreement from Beanstruck. Is that how it's pronounced? Okay. And so is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? Is there a discussion?
This is a rate study. We approximately do it every five years. And really the, the big part of the rate study is to look at where you at since the last five years, how well are your utilities standing up? How are they going to do with all of the inflationary changes that have happened? What kind of projects do we have planned for the next five years? How do they fit into your system? And then of those plans, what are the ways to finance? Are we looking at SRF loans? Are we looking at other ways to implement? And then what would the rate increases need to be for money? Five years ago, we did very few rate increases, but we thought we'd do a small one. That didn't happen annually. So we'll look at that again this time.
There further discussion? Roll call vote, the clerk will call the roll.
Prezyk?
Yes.
Dominguez? McFerrin?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
Okay, next up is discussion and consensus on setting a date for the pool feasibility study. When do we need to stand by?
So I, my recommendation, Mr. Mayor and council, would be the first meeting in May. For the general meeting. Yeah, I mean, we could do a work session. Are we going to change the, the time? What we've got? When we pass that? The council.
Hot contract.
Yes.
Oh, which we need.
I was only going to draft. Okay. We, we need to put some changes in and then bring it back.
Okay.
Sorry, that's.
I will not be here, the first meeting in May, but I couldn't join.
I mean, and I have no, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have no problem if you wanted to look at the second in May. My priority was getting books through budget and giving you a little bit of a be there and then you'll come into the to a work session on the feasibility studies.
I'm fine with doing it the first and if, I mean, there is going to be, is there going to be a vote in this meeting?
Yeah, it was just the information.
Consent.
Just a consensus that that will work and I would put the, when I put the agenda together, we would have the work session, we would date the investment.
So on seventh of May? Is that? Uh, that's about how long you think it's going to? Do you want to break a little bit of a break before you go into the move? That's probably be my question, because we can make it thirty hours. When?
I didn't hear what you said, not going necessarily need a break with that.
Yeah.
Come through it all together.
Well, my recommendation, we should have started at six thirty. Six thirty one, I think.
This is something that happens every, just for my benefit. Or something that's new.
This, this is a new study.
Okay, because I know the pool has always been. Sort of up in.
Yeah.
Yeah, from year to year, about, of keeping all that stuff, so.
Just to answer a little bit more similar to what, uh. Leo was stating, and this was a feasibility study council trying to find for us so we can be future. And, and look at that on for the, uh, plan of, go about projects to be, you know. Or when we get to. Yeah.
Okay.
Six thirty, May.
Six thirty, May seventh is on. Okay, next up is, uh, setting a date for the, a committee meeting for the utility committee.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I know I, I think we have some numbers, I'm trying to find the numbers. I will try to outline some.
You are lying.
A little bit of an agenda for you, if you wanted to take a look at your agenda in front of you for that. Utilities, that's discussion on garbage rate, discussion on utility study kickoff and into the new electric super. Yep. So. For that, whatever thing comes by, we would. Um, that committee is, I think. Space utility.
Yes.
Uh, me and Josh? Is that correct? Okay. Um, yeah. Why not? Um. Again, I mean, probably, um. You know, whatever's going to work for her. The week of April, anytime between the week of April eighth. Those next two weeks in there. If you have a possibility. Yeah, yeah, oh, wait a minute, I'm looking at May. Um, how about the twelve? What time would spring you? And flexible? Neither, yeah. Yeah. When they, I remember eleven thirty. Check. I would have to allow this one. I would drop me more than enough. That's. Okay.
So the, uh, next two people to get their calendars out are again Kara, our, uh, Mayor for Tim McFerrin. And, uh, council member Dominguez, uh, to set a date for the finance committee.
Okay. Are, are we going to do it? Um. Just really just touching base on that with, um, the audit work, you know, from the public's perspective. You know, we have a bunch of amendments and.
That we could do in May, can't we? Or do you need it before then? I mean, we need to sound off before then, or?
No, I should have, you should have the budget meeting ready, or the budget amendment ready by the first meeting in May. And, um, we should, yeah, we.
So we could.
Position for audit, you know, like, you know, like those audit.
What about the weekend, the thirteen through seventeenth of May with that? Please pass it.
You have anything for, for me to? Um, so Thursdays work the best, if you want to do in.
How about Thursday and sixteen?
That sounds good, because then I can just work from home, get some vacation that went over there. On, okay, the afternoon.
Afternoon, sure, can you tell me what works? I'm flexible right now.
April sixteen, right, I'm sorry, April or May?
May.
May. Oh. I can just. You can just do like that. Great, Bob, is that too late?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm on.
May sixteen.
Yeah.
Okay, the next agenda item is to set the date for the committee meeting for buildings and grounds, and I suggested that. The two members of the council to my right, uh, murmur among themselves and see what works. And so let's hear what they came up with.
Wow, you have an idea of when you're? Say a week or just anytime?
Just, yeah, just anything, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think I have it on there, our discussion will be about, and I just need to coordinate with the library director. And then I would like to do this. But they can think about, I thought that I was supposed to be at the. Last time. It's Josh, oh, it wasn't Josh and I, it was just like. I'm, I'm.
We were supposed to switch on, but which one? Finance to?
No, it was buildings and grounds. From, I cost, from ambulance.
From ambulance to, fine, I can look at it, but from, I thought it was from ambulance to finance that we moved. You two, so, but we can take a look at it.
Do we need to do?
We can, we can hold off on this one, and then I can follow up with the, you can follow up with an email. And we can schedule. We'll just put a follow up.
If Josh still wants to do buildings and ground, that's fine with me, I was just trying to take some stuff off your plate.
Right, it was going to be one of those, I remember.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's okay.
That concludes the agenda for tonight, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, is there discussion? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Counsel, anything?